Welcome to the August regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Lake Mills Area School District. The mission statement for the district is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. I would ask for verification of the meeting notice.
Yes, it was posted on the LMASD website and at the Lake Mills post office and submitted to the Lake Mills leader.
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion for the agenda's approval.
I move the board approve the agenda as revised or as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd now like to call the meeting to order and ask if you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a rooting justice for all.
And if we could have a roll call, please.
Brianna Beslik.
Here.
Dawn Delaney.
Here.
Ken Imers.
Here.
Amy Litcher.
Here.
Robert Tempirio.
Here.
All members are present. The next item on the agenda, our board reports. Dr. Delaney, our clerk, do you have some correspondence to report?
Yes, we received two thank you letters from retirees Wendy Brockert and Chris Rumery. Wendy was the business manager for many years and Chris was a bus driver for nearly 41 years.
Okay, thank you very much. And now moving into administrative reports. Ms. Naylor, Director of Business Services.
So I have three quick updates from the business office. First is in regards to our audit. We had our auditors here from Whitfley the week of, well, the first couple days of the week of July 26th. So they were here on Monday and just a short period on Tuesday. And they were able to wrap up with a nice smooth audit process. This is our second year working with Brian Anderson at Whitfley and we've been very pleased working with him. So that has wrapped up and we're just waiting for their reporting. In regards to the 2020-2021 financials, we have got a lot of our DPI reporting underway. In fact, I just had Dawn sign off on one of the reports today. So our 1505 AC, which is our aid certification, that impacts our aid certification is underway. And another report was just recently approved by DPI, so we're waiting on our auditors to do their steps. So just kind of an update to let you know that things are moving along in that sense. And then finally, a capital project quick update. At the elementary school, we have the drainage project going on. So there's four components of that. The first two, earthwork and curb pouring, that part is complete. They're working on finishing up landscaping and then this week, the paving should be completed. And then at the high school, the roofing project is complete. They're just waiting on the manufacturer to do the inspection so then we can be provided with a warranty for that. And that is all. Any questions for me?
Okay, thank you very much. Next report from Dr. Olson, District Administrator.
All right, I'm going to start with introducing Toni Zastro, our school nurse who's going to present a summary of her annual report. This is something that comes to the board each year. A little busier year in the nursing world than probably ever before. It has been a year. So in case some of you don't know me, I'm Toni Zastro. I've been the district school nurse. I think this is going to be my 24th year. I'm a lifelong resident of Lake Mills, a Lake Mills High School alumni. I'm not sure why I didn't move away, but I'm still here. A graduate of UW Oshkosh. I have my Bachelor of Nursing from there. I've been employed from, by Fort Healthcare since 1987. And my experience there in the hospital has been medical, surgical, and pediatric nursing. And then I also have done several years in home health. I've been hired for the Lake Mills School District as a school nurse since October of 1997. And I'm also a National Board of School Nursing certified nurse since 2000. So I am contracted through the Fort Healthcare School Nurse Program for 30 hours a week. This past year, I had 200 extra hours added on to the contract because of all the COVID-19 pandemic extra work that happened to come by our way. We also had hired a health aide for 25 hours a week. She started in October and helped us through the end of the school year. She primarily did health room visits, helped me with some clerical things, and got all of our vision screening done for our elementary school kids in grades five and seven at the middle school. So for pandemic response, I was involved in several things. During, when the school closed down in March, I worked at the Fort Healthcare COVID Triage Clinic, which was a great precursor to the school year. I was able to counsel people that have either been close contacts with COVID and were wondering about if they should have tests done, or they were ill and were seeking advice on testing. And the school nurse group did make a guidance program that talked about mitigation measures to have in the classroom and the health room office and things like that. I did do a presentation for all staff on protecting themselves and others from COVID-19. I went over health room procedures for the administrative assistants and provided lots of communication, all kinds of tools and letters, emails. Helped with the COVID-19 six student guide to help guide our parents in when their students should stay home, when they should come to school. We had absent tracking spreadsheets made for each school. We had 3,275 student entries and staff. I think that also includes staff, actually. And that was anybody that was calling in sick, then I would contact them and help them with resources, information, and guidance. Also, we did a lot of contact tracing and notification for students and staff. We did a line list for Jefferson County Health Department. We worked real close with them. They weren't able time-wise to be able to do close contact tracing and things like that. So we were doing that here at school ourselves. I've been a resource for health education and other COVID type of things and then met many times, many, many meetings last year on COVID with administration and Fort Healthcare. So our statistics then from our COVID-19 symptom tracking and contact tracing from last year is as follows. We had over 1,600 illnesses tracked. We had 131 positive cases and 782 students and staff were quarantined. And that was a real coordinated effort that we had between building secretaries, administrators. We needed interpretation services from our district ESL staff. The district office staff were helpful with helping us with the line list for Jefferson County. Tasha was one of the great helpers there and I have to give a shout out to Megan Larrabee because she was available evenings, weekends, doing our robo calls and whatever we needed for those quarantines that were needed. So our positive COVID cases primarily were every month that we were in school, but we peaked November, December, January. Those were tough months. We had our largest amount of positive cases at that time. And that's showing all three schools and the staff up there. So about 75% of my time, maybe more, was spent on COVID mitigation and contact tracing and quarantining and calling parents and things like that. So the other, maybe 25% of my time was dealing with other things that a school nurse should be doing. Taking care of other things like some of our chronic health conditions that we have in school. We have at least 92 kids that have asthma. Eight of them received assistance in the office for their asthma. We have severe anaphylactic allergies, 33 students with that. Four insulin dependent diabetics, 23 students with heart problems, and seven seizure disorder students. And with that enrollment, we have 74 students with chronic health conditions. And I have about 28 health plans that I make for the pretty serious problems that need direction to the teaching staff and other staff that would be in contact with those students, caring for them. And with all of our mask wearing last year, other communicable diseases, we're at a very low minimum. It was amazing to see this. We're stripped through it. We normally have 30-something every year and that's not, we don't even know about most of them. You know, that's only at the elementary school where we keep track of that. And influenza was zero, so that was a nice little push there for the masks. So our health room visits were also lower. For one thing, many of our students were working virtually. So our in-student, in-school student population was less. And then teacher, teaching staff were given first aid kits and with some minimal supplies that they could take care of some of the minor problems in the schoolroom, in the classroom. And then kids that were ill stayed home. So our health room visits, you can see, are less than half of what they normally would be. And our students that we sent home, of course, were less as well. Illnesses still pop up during the middle of the school day. And with our decreased student population in school, our medication needs were also decreased. We usually have at least 30 scheduled medications during the school day. We only had 12 this year. So those numbers were all down from previous years. I was able to do some staff training. Our CPR first aid training was very minimal. We're actually quite behind and are having a lot of CPR and first aid classes this August here. Actually, we started already last month. So we only did 12 in-person CPR first aid training. Those people were primarily our medical hold team or secretarial staff or people that were off campus and didn't have access to the medical hold team. And then we did, that was in August, and then in April, I did check off face-to-face with six students that were staff members that did the courses virtually. And the American Heart Association gave us a good deal on the virtual courses. We saved probably 50% of the cost with that virtual course. In the years to come, I have a feeling that price will go right back where it was, so it was nice. I did medication training and did health condition training with certain people that had care for the certain students that had health problems. I trained 12 other people besides the medical hold team and specific one-on-one PIRAs on emergency medication needs for their students. And then, of course, I met with the medical hold teams and went over our procedures, emergency medications, and health plans. So part of the school nurse job is also making sure our immunization audit is done for the state. Normally, we're about 100% compliant. This year, we're a little lower. We have to factor in that some clinics were closed, some people weren't getting their vaccines. The couple of kids that brought us to that 99.6 instead of 100% ended up getting their vaccines eventually. So I anticipate things will go well this year, I hope. And then the required minimum, we had 93% of our students have that and mostly that is because of our waivers that we have. So a parent can choose a health waiver if their student has a health condition that says that they shouldn't have those specific vaccines if there's a religious reason that doesn't allow for them to have vaccines or if a parent chooses for personal reasons to not have their student vaccinated. And then Jefferson County Health Department, I've been organizing them to come and do flu vaccine clinics. They had to cancel last year because of the pandemic. Were scheduled for November 11th this year. It's during a high school, elementary school, parent-teacher conference after school hours, so hopefully we can get that back on the board here. Vision screening turned out about what is normal. We usually have 30 to 40 kids that need to have professional eye care appointments to have that evaluated. We weren't able to do 4K this year. That was one change that happened with the pandemic. And then for my goals for the year, just updating our sick student guideline and for communicable diseases, hoping to push those flu vaccines to decrease to less illnesses going around in school and helping us all stay in school. Working on, I'm going to work on Narcan policy and procedure. I've been working on that for a couple of years and it seems like it's always like the last thing on my list, but hopefully I'll finish that this year. And then I've made a staff field trip form that we've been using for the last couple of years that we had field trips, but it's still getting tweaked. So those are my goals. And I went to the National Association of School Nursing Conference in spring. It was virtual and it was considered like the end of the pandemic, you know? And so they were talking about the pandemic year and how it's been so tough on all staff and students and nurses. And I just thought that this struck gold here. Once the storm is over, you won't remember how you made it through, how you managed to survive. You won't even be sure whether the storm is really over. But one thing is certain, when you come out of the storm, you won't be the same person who walked in. And that's how I felt at the end of the year. So do you have any questions or comments?
Well, thank you very much and thank you for all your hard work this year.
I wanted to thank you again, Toni. I know people don't realize that when you get your positive COVID test that it's never during work hours. It was on a Saturday or Sunday or seven or eight o'clock during the weeknight. So that's what accounted for the extra hour. So and not once did Toni ever complain or say, "I'm off the clock. I'm already out of hours. I'm not going to do this." I mean, she just really remained vigilant right to the end and did a lot of contact tracing and made a lot of tough calls that she didn't want to make and I just thank her for that. So Megan, I'm going to actually flip up to the greenhouse since you're over to the screen. I'm going to just talk for two minutes about the greenhouse. So I went, as you know, or maybe you don't know, but we did, the FFA alumni took down the current greenhouse. And if you look at the picture there, you can see that everything except for the concrete footings are out. So I purposely went over there today in the middle of the rain and took some pictures. So I'll just kind of let you show that. So this one, if you stop right there. If you've been in the back of the high school, you know there are drainage issues back there. It's one of the reasons that, I think that was last fall already, we came to you with part of the referendum money that was left over and said we wanted to pave this in. Well, we got going with the greenhouse and ripped it down and Peter Sanon from Findorf came back there with me one day and said, "You might want to just do a little bit more engineering work back here than just put up a new greenhouse and pave it because you're going to have," and to stay right there on that picture for a second, Megan, "you're going to have more water issues if it's not really engineered properly." So with some of the pre-ref work that we've done with UA, they already have Kupoor on as a civil engineer. And I talked with Peter Sanon again and we just said, "We need to take another look at this area. I think we're going to need to pay some money to have that engineered." I also talked with Steve Wilkie and yes, there will be storm sewer permits and other things. And the reason I say that is there are two drains, one coming off of the side hill and then one coming out the back, that depending on how far back we're going to want to pave, either some of that's going to have to be buried and run out to the drain that borders the soccer field or we need to take also another closer look at the placement of the greenhouse. Because right now, when it really rained a lot or snowed a lot, we did get water in the floor of the greenhouse. So I just want to make sure that before we pour concrete for that, that that greenhouse is set at the appropriate elevation. And if that's not going to work in its current location, maybe we need to kind of move it around in the back there to make sure we do have the right location and also that everything is sloped out from the back of the building because think, Megan, if you go, for those of you not familiar, okay, so there's the back of the building. As you can see, there's nowhere else for that water to go. So we got to make sure that it kind of drains around a corner basically and comes out towards the soccer field. So our original plan, we're going to put up a greenhouse, we're going to pave it, and that's what we're going to do. So anyway, I'm meeting with the civil engineer and with Peter here shortly. They are going to take a closer look at that. Meanwhile, we are going to move ahead with the RFP for the actual greenhouse structure. I've been working with the alumni and we still think we can get some in-kind donations for some of the concrete work and possibly some of the other work. However, just with the number of permits, we are probably going to have to pull it, probably set our timeline back a little bit. Even though I told Peter I really don't want to miss out on the spring growing season, so faster we can get moving on this, cross our fingers, maybe there's still hope here for spring to have this job completed. It just, it depends on the timing of the weather. Those of you that are in construction know, you know, once things fall below 50 degrees at night, it is harder to pour concrete and asphalt and so on. I don't see us pouring the asphalt till spring because we will not make that timeline. That's the last thing that needs to be done. And typically, by mid to late October, they don't pour asphalt anymore. And that's not a big deal. I think if we can at least get the structures of the greenhouse up, we can build through the winter months if the weather cooperates. That's my greenhouse update.
If, as the ESAR funds, we are planning on using 150,000 from the ESAR with all the drainage and civil engineering work, will that, is that an estimate staying the same?
I might come back to you. So right now, I had actually figured in the pavement part of that, but we actually do have referendum money still set aside for that, so I'll come back. I don't see it being a very high cost for the engineering. It's a very small site. There's no other questions. Then I'm going to go into our mitigation plan. So I'm going to kind of lay it out here tonight, so I'm just going to preface this with this probably a little bit of my own personal opinions here tonight. And I'm going to end with the fact that the board always does have the ability to vote or direct me in any way you see fit. But I know we've gotten several questions. I think some of you are probably here tonight about, you know, the plan that was sent out and is that following CDC guidance? Why isn't it following CDC guidance? And I did preface a little bit in the back to school letter that, and we have heard this from the health department and our legal counsel, that the CDC advises on a national level. Every recommendation that they give, it will be based on national data. And the county health departments and the hospitals will typically align with the CDC data. So just going to go in a little detail about that. So if you remember last year at this time, the guidance from the CDC and our county health department was that due to the metrics that were put in place, that all the counties in Jefferson schools start virtually. So at that time, we were already starting to go against some of the CDC recommendations because I came to the board, I think in early August, and was adamant that the elementary start in person. I felt really strongly about our earliest learners, about kindergarten, first grade students, that they needed to be in person. At that time, the board decided to take a vote that night and with the recommendation that all K-12 students have the in-person option. So I just want to remind people that already a year ago, even though the CDC came out with that recommendation, we chose based on our local needs to not align with that recommendation. And at the same time, the board did actually hold a traditional sports season. And I can say, even with that recommendation, I was scared to death to start the school year. I know many of our teachers were scared to death to start the school year. We didn't know what was coming for us. I just knew that our kids needed to be in school. There was another part of the guidance that as we started school, the metric was to close schools if there were three positive cases in a building in a week. Well, late in September, we hit those three positive cases and we did close the high, we shifted the high school to virtual learning for three days. However, when we looked at the details of those three cases, one was a staff member, two were students, none of those three cases were related. And so I did go back to the health department, and I should preface this, I have a very good relationship with the health department and with the nurses at Fort. And I said, "This does not make sense to me. This wasn't an evidence of COVID spreading in our school. We now just, you know, shifted virtually for three days." And also, I wasn't so sure the three days were going to really do anything because we knew at that time quarantines were a 14-day period. And I thought, "I'm not so sure if this is really a serious spread if bringing kids back in three days was really going to be that preventative." We didn't see any positive contacts from outside of that. So in those three days, we kept 350 students out of school. And then on October 27, well, right before that, we did change the way that we handled cohorts and quarantines and we sent out that information. And that was just due to, after we had quarantined enough students, we kind of figured out that there were things that were going to work, there were other things that weren't going to work, and we shifted along the way. On October 26, we did shift the entire district to virtual instruction through November 10, mostly due to the fact that we had quarantined over 100 students and 30 staff members at that time. And we were seeing positive cases, but throughout that two-week period with the number of districts, well, the whole district was quarantined, we really didn't see the spread at that time either. And I do realize that there was a mask mandate at that time. We had one other virtual shift and that was at the elementary school right before Christmas where we had some staff members test positive for COVID. And that was at a time that we could not trace back the source. It was one of the only times where there were just kind of these miscellaneous cases and we assumed that there was some non-symptomatic positive cases going on and so we did shift at that time. The reason I say those facts are the fact that I know even last year, people wanted a firm number, a firm metric for when we were going to close schools, when were we going to open schools. And I see that coming again where when are we going to require face masks? When are we not going to require face masks? And I know I've told many parents and many teachers, it's not quite that simple. All through last year, when we made those decisions, it was based on the internal data that we had. And like Toni said, she worked a lot of hours. And Toni was clearly on the conservative side of things as we made these decisions. We, I talked with Summerl, our epidemiologist. Anytime we're making those decisions, I could text him, I could call him at all hours of the night. Lisa Jensen at Fort Healthcare was much the same way. I knew where they stood with COVID mitigation practices. They also knew that as superintendents in Jefferson County, that we had a job that we needed to do as well. And so they are very supportive. They are very, very good to work with. And by no means does our mitigation plan make it look like that we're in open defiance of anything that the county health department or that Fort Healthcare would be advising for us. I, just a couple more facts. This past summer school, we did run summer school without face coverings after day one. We had no positive cases and I realized that the positive numbers were also extremely low in the county at that time, almost nonexistent. But we've also been running a robust rec program all through summer. We currently have 50 students in the elementary school every single day indoors. So we are watching those students very, very closely and have experienced so far no positive cases. The majority of the positive cases that we saw throughout the year were really a parent transmitting COVID to their child. Saw a lot of girlfriend-boyfriend spread. We saw a lot of close friends through sleepover kind of spread. A lot of it was generated from outside the school district and brought in. Not that we can be sure of anything because we never always really know for sure where the positive cases are coming from. We can only make assumptions. So when I wrote the mitigation plan, looking at our county data, going all the way back to last year at this time, I did not want to start at this time, I did not want to start with the most restrictive mitigation practices that we have. I want what we do in the school district to make sense. So right now, with how we are operating, you know, between summer school, our programming for rec, our summer playground program, and then going into school, I'd like to see, with the numbers still being relatively low in the county, and I know they are creeping up quickly, are we able to have a choice of whether to send your child to school with face coverings or not? Right now, I think a lot of parents are, and I'm going to speak on my own beliefs, I think a lot of parents are making that choice based on the fact that vaccinations are out for ages 12 and up, based on the fact that the vaccine has been available to our staff since last January. So we've had opportunity for that. I realize that our 11-year-olds and under can't be vaccinated. It's why we are mandating that our staff that are not vaccinated wear a mask. I could possibly see that changing to enforcing all staff wearing masks if we start to see spread, especially at the elementary school. I also know that we're going to have parents requesting special accommodations on either side of this issue. We did try to accommodate parents with children who could not wear a face mask for multiple reasons last year. I also know that we have students that have, you know, that are immunocompromised, that have other health issues, that can't wear a mask and can't get vaccinated. And we do have 504 plans that we can put in place for them. We can make accommodations in the classroom and in the lunchroom and at recess for students, much like we do for peanut allergies and any other medical conditions that our students would have. We can work with that classroom teacher, with the building principal. And lastly, we do have the Jedi virtual option, which I think some of you heard at the end of the Finance Committee, as an option. It might not be the synchronous option that you would prefer. I can tell you, again, from a teacher's standpoint, that our teachers were near burnout with that option last year. They did everything in their ability to accommodate parents, to make it look as much as like students were in the classroom as possible. That's just not something that is feasible for us to maintain. Once again, unless we staff it appropriately, and that will take a lot of staffing, and actually plan for that virtual learning. So I'm going to end with, you know, I know the board did not vote on this issue, but the board is certainly open to taking this back if they want to reexamine that. I just feel somewhat confident that we navigated an entire school year in person with sports all the way through with very minimal disruption. I probably didn't feel like that to some of you parents who had your children quarantined three times. But we were able to run a full year of in-person instruction, and I think very successfully. In fact, so successfully that our test scores are actually showing that, and we'll be reporting out on that here in another month. Any questions? I would say if you want to open that up for any kind of discussion.
Honey, do you know if the incidence of COVID infection is any different now than it was last year when this started at the same time?
I'd have to go back and look at that, that data. I know with looking at the Jefferson County dashboard, you know, they're only going back to January 1. I mean, I do have notes that go all the way back to the beginning of the school year, because we were actually tracking the 14-day case rate per 100,000 weekly. So I think we were, when we went back to school, I think we were up over, I think, 13 or 100,000. But like I said, don't quote me on that. I'd have to go back and, and look at my notes or ask the county for that data. I mean, you can certainly see that, you know, we hit the peak, you know, in January with positive cases and a little bit of a peak in April, if you're looking at the dashboard. When I just, we met with Summeros on Friday, all the Jefferson County superintendents did talk with them. As far as I know, all of the school districts in Jefferson County are going in with much a similar plan, with the exception, I know two of the boards need to vote in two of the districts yet on those plans. So Summeros is well aware of what our plan is. I talked to Lisa Jensen at Fort Healthcare today as well, so she's well aware of that.
I guess I ask you, so for summer school, we tried it and went without masks, and you said that Summeros kind of endorsed what we had set up, you know, and felt good about it. What are, I mean, like, he knows our plan, but would he say I endorse it again? Like, do you know what I'm saying? Like, does he have that same reaction with what we currently have set up and where we are?
What he said is, you know, he will always stick by the CDC recommendations. But the fact that we're in regular contact with him, I think, helps that as well. I know there's new CDC guidance, and then he reiterated that too, that with this variant, unless you're sitting with a KN95 mask on, it's probably not going to do as much as a regular cloth face mask like we are wearing right now, even though it helps. So I, you know, there's always that risk. You know, we were fully masked last year, we had positive cases. I know we'll have positive cases again. Like I said, I think if we see all of a sudden, you know, we've got positive cases everywhere, obviously, there's going to be a need to change and say, like, you know, the face masks worked last year, we're going to have to go in and do some intermediate measures. I think it's hard going back to when the CDC wanted us to do the most extreme mitigation measures last year with full virtual instruction, which is always the safest measure at any point. It just, it was a little bit, I felt, too extreme at that time, based on the county data that we were seeing. So, said, we get to December, January, we might see that need. If the outbreak is here, I mean, I think we're going to see this Delta variant peak sooner rather than later. I think they're expecting it to peak probably September.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Olson. The next item on the agenda is a time for community input. We do have a number of people registered. I was provided a list. We have 13 people who have asked to speak this evening. The board policy typically is that we allow a total of 15 minutes for the community input, and ask that people limit their time, individual time, to three minutes. And I would suggest, given the number of people who are, have registered, that unless there is an objection, I would expand that 15-minute period to allow all those who have registered to speak. And I would ask that you please respect that three minutes in light of that. I think it's also important to note that under the Wisconsin Open Meetings law, the board will not comment or take action on any remarks made this evening during the public comment period unless an item is noted on the board's agenda. And so individuals will be called in the order in which they registered. I would ask that you go to the podium. Again, identify yourself, provide your address, and begin your remarks. And we will have a timer to keep track of the three minutes. So the first person is Susanna Barnes.
Thank you. My name is Susanna Barnes. I live at 128 West Lake Park Place in Lake Mills. Good evening. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to speak to you here tonight. My son is a sixth grader at Lake Mills Middle School. Our family has been fortunate to be part of the Lake Mills School District since we moved here, and he began 4K several years ago. And we have, on many occasions, benefited from the amazing care professionalism of our district teachers, our administrators, our paraeducators, and all of the school staff. I see a number of them here today. We've expressed our gratitude for that, that care personally at times, but I just wanted to have a chance to say it on the public record as well. I would start by saying that I am not a public medical expert. I am not a public health policy expert. I am a data expert. I am a data professional. It's what I do for a living. I work for a Fortune 300 company, where I spend each day assisting people to find data to make accurate, relevant decisions based on facts, based on valued information to make, we build statistical models to look at the data that we have at hand to predict what's going to happen, so that we can make choices for what's likely to occur, instead of waiting and reacting to things as they happen. We find the information related to the problem at hand. We verify its accuracy, and we make informed decisions. And the data before us now regarding COVID-19 and the Delta variant is clear, and this district is not listening to what it's telling us. The recent notice from the school district detailing the absence of any serious COVID mitigation efforts this school year referenced the need to look at county-level data. So I think that if we do that, and we do it in an objective manner, there is no question that we're putting our children at risk by not requiring masks at school until a vaccine is available for all school-aged children. Our Jefferson County-level data shows a 51% increase in COVID cases over the last seven days. Our school district geographic-level data shows an average of over 16 new cases daily per 100,000 over the last seven days. That's larger than last year at this time. Those are abstract numbers, so let's put it a little bit more clearly. Between July 1 and July 23, our school district geographic area saw an increase of three cases. Over the past two weeks, it's increased by 30. We cannot sit back and wait to see what happens next. The data is not lying. This is not the same disease that we faced last year. It is drastically more transmissible. If we do nothing, we are putting our children at risk. If we want to stay at county-level data, then let's look at our vaccination rates compared to the areas of the country where we see pediatric hospitalizations rising. We've not even reached 50% vaccination rate for people who are eligible to get vaccines. That's not even partial vaccination. Our numbers are worse than the county-level data for many of those places with pediatric hospitalizations rising. And we can see in those counties what happens when people do nothing. We see the toll it's taking on their communities. You have all the data that you need before you to make the right decision. I have trusted this school district with the care of my son since he was four years old, and the choices that you're making now have betrayed that trust. The decision you're making undermines your goal to provide open, safe schools for our children.
Ms. Barnes, your time is up.
Thank you.
Tammy Hayjack? Pardon me?
She's out ill.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Hayjack, 262 Brewster Drive. Almost one year ago, I began emailing and speaking to you, the Board of Education, Dr. Olson, Jennifer Bauer, Nate Grindel, and Tony Zastro against masking my child. I have been dismissed and ignored along with other parents. I was then and continue now to be dismayed that all of you think a piece of cloth would stop the spread of a virus smaller than the fibers of that mask. I've done my research, and there is no evidence to prove that wearing a mask is effective. There is, however, evidence to prove the opposite. Many studies have been done showing how harmful they are, especially for children whose bodies are still growing and developing. Now, I can go on and on about them, but I won't. They're easily accessible on the internet, and I previously provided some of them to you. Now, I understand and received Dr. Olson's email stating that masks will be optional as of now, and that she and the administration have the authority to change this at any time. However, this still concerns me, because at any moment, these masks will be back on the kids because of pressures from the teachers and staff who are afraid. Regardless of the virus or the spread, children should never wear these masks. I have previously asked you and continue to ask, will you be responsible for these children when health issues develop because of masking them? Will the teachers? I'd like to know that answer. My husband Jim and I moved to Lake Mills 14 years ago from Florida because we believed the school system was best for our daughters, and that you had our best, kids' best interest in mind. I cannot tell you how disappointed I have been over the last two years with the administration and teachers of Lake Mills School District. After spring break, when our daughter Nadia returned to school, she was segregated from her classmates, was not allowed to attend her band lesson, was bullied by staff, and treated as if she had leprosy because she wasn't wearing a mask. Nadia herself came up here and spoke at the school board meeting in May, and she cried, cried, while explaining how the mask gave her headaches, how she can't breathe or focus while wearing one, but no one cared. No one acknowledged her or the other students who spoke out. We cannot trust that you will make decisions according to their freedoms and civil liberties given to her by the Constitution. We also cannot trust what you are teaching them. But that's a different subject for a different day. Due to your unwillingness to listen to us, you have left us no other choice but to remove our daughter from your care and instruction during the day. Thank you.
Elias Fortier Meyer?
Hello, my name's Elise Fortier Meyer. I live at 432 Fremont Street. Thanks for allowing me to come and share my thoughts with you today. My family and I have been residents in Lake Mills for the last eight years. We love this community. We're a proud family to live here, and we can't really imagine raising our three children anywhere else. We love it here. I'm here tonight to ask you to listen with open ears and open hearts about what I have to say, and to voice my concerns regarding the upcoming school year and the letter that was released late Friday regarding the district's plan to make mask-wearing optional. We all know the issue of COVID has divided people, seriously divided people. Some people don't feel that it's much of a threat at all, while others have given up all of their normalcies to keep themselves and their families healthy. The school board and Dr. Olson have been inundated with varying opinions, emails, phone calls, concerns regarding how we protect our children from COVID. We appreciate all of your dedication to our schools, to our children, and I don't envy any of you for what you've had to deal with, with the division. The stakes here are high. At the end of the day, the universal thing that we can all agree on is that our children are the most important thing in the world to us, to all of us. They're what matter, not politics, not anything else but our children. The district did a great job last year offering choices and solutions for people with differing comfort levels and concerns. The protocols put in place were the reason that we didn't see spread. Mask-wearing was why we didn't see spread. We know it was an incredible strain on the educators and staff of the Lake Mills Area School District. But the efforts worked. They worked. That's what kept our kids safe. That being said, it's pretty mind-boggling, standing up here right now, that with a newer and more serious variant of COVID threatening all of us, especially amongst unvaccinated populations, that we're now giving up precautions and mask-wearing, or saying, no, don't need it anymore. Today, experts warned that the Delta variant may be the most contagious virus they've yet to see, ever, ever. It's described as hyper-transmissible. It's 1,000 times more transmissible than the original COVID variant. We know that children rarely die from COVID, right? That's great. But is that how we're going to weigh the pros and cons of wearing a mask? It's so hard to wear a mask that we have to decide whether, oh, let's risk it. What about the family members they expose? What about people with immunocompromised bodies or people who are elderly? It's so exhausting to have to continuously hammer people about what experts, scientists, epidemiologists are saying and giving us facts about and warning us about. Shouldn't we listen to people who've dedicated their entire lives to studying this? On the Jefferson County Health Department's website, the first thing listed for what can you do to prevent the spread of COVID is to wear a mask if you're not vaccinated. That covers every single elementary school student in our district. They are not vaccinated, and they should be wearing masks. They are not vaccinated, and they should be wearing masks.
Your, your three minutes have expired.
Thank you.
My name is Kate Duchateau, and I live at 508 Fremont Street here in Lake Mills. My kids go to school here in the district, and I am a critical care registrant in Madison. I'm speaking with you tonight to comment on the recent newsletter in which our district administrator stated that barrier masks will not be mandated in the school district. I implore you, as a community member, a mother, a knowledgeable and exhausted healthcare professional, to reconsider your stance. There is literally no governing public health agency, even at the most local level, that does not recommend everyone wear masks indoors. Last year, the Lake Mills School District did an excellent job preventing school spread of COVID. Kudos. Why change? The threat, at least at the elementary school level, is still there and arguably worse considering the increased transmissibility of this new Delta variant. The guidance here is clear, and it is based in scientific fact. Is the benefit of not mandating masks really worth the cost? I am confused as to why and how the school board delegated COVID mitigation policies to the district administrator. Was there a special session that we weren't aware of discussing the need for such an authoritarian approach? School board officials were elected by city residents to represent their constituents, the expectation being thoughtful discussion between members on controversial issues, sharing differing perspectives. The board should be given the opportunity to ask questions and have them answered, not overruled without discussion. This decision should not belong to a single authority. I believe the board needs to assert itself into this decision. I am wholly aware of the pressure the district has been put under by people who have followed the path of misinformation. I would assume there have been threats of pulling children from the district. The truth is, people will pull their children from the district despite what side the district lies on the mask mandate controversy. One side will pull their child because they think masks aren't important; the other will pull their child to save their child's life. The misinformed voices are loud, and they have been threatening to all of us. Please do not give up doing what is right for all of the children in the Lake Mills Public School System. I thank all of you for the time and energy working through these difficult decisions in the setting of such vocal untruths, but you have support from your community to do the right thing. Please change your mind. Thank you.
Oops, I'm kind of short. Can you hear me? My name is Ronnie Monroe, and I live at N6081 Zabel Road in Jefferson, which is in this district. I'm hoping that my words have some impact on the school board here today. I really regret to have to be up here saying this, but I, I think that the district plan is wholly inadequate to deal with the new Delta virus, which, by the way, hasn't arrived here yet, other than the, some of the cases that are just starting in this region. I kind of feel like it's saying, hold my beer, you haven't seen anything yet. The Delta variant is twice as contagious as the Beta variant or UK variant, which is twice as contagious as the ancestral strain, which mostly affected Lake Mills last year. The RNaR, or number that one sick person infects for Delta, is five to nine, depending on the circumstances surrounding the transmission, such as ventilation and duration of exposure. This is two to three times the RNaR of the ancestral variant. That means it's two to three times more contagious, and that a person with Delta stands to infect five to nine people, depending on the circumstances. So we know the viral load of an infected person is 1,000 times greater in Delta than it was in the Beta variant, and that the incubation period is roughly 3.5 days, almost half of the ancestral strain. We even know that vaccinated people can spread the disease, and that people getting vaccinated today won't have protection for at least five weeks. So, this is when the district decides to put forth a plan that goes against the recommendations of the CDC, the World Health Organization, and the American Academy of Pediatrics, not to mention the Department of Public Instruction. This variant is also more severe. Young people and children are filling up hospital beds with this variant. In Wisconsin, as of August 4th, 88.9% of our ICU beds are in use. There may not be available beds for children in our district who may need them, and I don't want to see any parent in our district face a situation like this. I worked as an RN, and I can tell you that this plan would not pass our infection control department. When I send my child to school with an N95 respirator on, which is what I intend to send my child with, to protect him from the virus circulating in the building, I have a concern that my child is going to be required to take that off in order to eat and drink in the building. And he will be in a room with other kids who haven't worn a mask anywhere at any time and who are unvaccinated. So I do think that there are options. I think you could maybe have lunch outdoors for the kids that don't want to eat indoors or have, excuse me, classes outdoors. So kids exposed to COVID at school need to be quarantined. I, I can't believe that if they're exposed in school, that, that they will be allowed to continue there. HEPA filters should be used in all classrooms. Exposure is highly likely to occur in a communal setting such as school, so the use of a mask or respirator will mitigate this, and so will social distancing. Offer parents options such as virtual learning or a separate learning location where all the students are complying with the recommendations of the CDC, the WHO, and the American Association of Pediatrics.
Ms. Monroe?
Instead, the district is going to-
Ms. Monroe?
Yes.
I'm sorry, the three minutes has collapsed.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Monroe, and I have a child in Lake Mills School District. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak here today, and I'll keep my remarks brief. It's just one page and one sentence on the second page. But before I start, I want to tell you something that goes on, went on in my household today. Since COVID started, my family has done a Zoom meeting every two weeks, and I have a sister in France, relatives in Portugal, New York, Chicago, so this is really a nice thing that we do. Today, when I was on the Zoom call, I heard that my brother-in-law, his son, his son's wife, and his daughter are positive for COVID, the COVID virus. I also heard that my nephew, who's an entertainer in New York City, also is positive with COVID. These people have all been vaccinated. The vaccinations have kept them out of the hospital, but they have not, you know, prevented them from being sick. They all are on the mend, and I am hopeful that they have positive outcomes. That was my morning, this morning. In my career as a probation pro supervisor, I made difficult decisions on a regular basis. These decisions were not always popular. They did not always please everyone, and at times were uncomfortable even to me. I, however, can look back with some solace from the fact that I made these decisions based on the best available information. If I did not have enough information, I would solicit input from various subject matter experts. Throughout this decision-making process, I kept in mind my, my, my basic mission statement for our department, which is the protection of the community. After reviewing the district's plan, I have concerns. They include not quarantining children exposed in the classroom, having periods where the children must unmask in the presence of numerous other unmasked children in order to eat or drink, the lack of universal masking, and add to this the fact that from grade six on down, the kids are not vaccinated. If the Delta variant spreads through the district, I do not feel the administration can say that they did all the safeguards they could do to protect the children. They have not, they have not added, not adhered to all the available information. Steps I would like to suggest is that we look at universal masking, again, the virtual learning, and addressing the problems of exposing the kids to the virus during lunch period. Thank you.
Hi, I'm going to throw a curveball, and I'm actually not going to talk about masking because I've already emailed you about that. I'm Andrea Graham, 420 Wakeman Circle. I'm actually here to talk to you about the strategic plan, and I've emailed you a document with some of the things I wanted to share about. Looking at the strategic plan and some of the pillars that need to be addressed, I just have, as an educator, I have things that I wanted to share with you. One of the pillars is to foster student engagement and learning, implement ongoing professional development in order to enhance student engagement, relationships, and achievement. And in order to achieve that, I really encourage all educators, administrators, and board members to read the book, The Knowledge Gap. Basically, it's by Natalie Wexler. Basically, in a nutshell, students need to build and retain knowledge in order to become proficient readers and writers. Students need to be excited about learning new things. We engage students by teaching about cool things. Science, social studies, and history are subjects that need to be taught every single day. My child was a first grader last year, and I know it was a weird year, but as a teacher, I know this is true as well. He had one science and social studies class per week, basically one chunk of time dedicated to that. That is absolutely not enough. We need to work to change that. I know we can integrate subjects into literacy instruction, and teachers are trying their hardest to fit it all in, but that approach is not good enough. Our students need to be taught to, taught to read using science-based reading and writing approaches and then be immersed in engaging content learning. This will help address our students' engagement and attitudes towards school and learning. Achievement, also, we're always, you know, basing it on test scores, and building background knowledge is going to help with that as well. In order to show achievement on the test scores, we need to teach social studies and science, not just embed them within a reading lesson where in actuality, the teacher is focused on students just talking about comprehension strategies. We need to teach subject areas and build knowledge. So that is my plea to all of you, to read that book. Thank you. Another thing I'd like you to look at, and there are some links to different lessons, is the Human Rights Campaign's Welcoming Schools curriculum. And this would address the pillar of connecting school and the community, to foster meaningful dialogue, connections, and partnerships with families and community stakeholders, and to nurture a culture that values diversity, mental health, and inclusivity. The Madison School District has used that curriculum going on over five years now. I've taught it myself. In order to achieve a more understanding, connected, and empathetic school community, teachers need time and explicit lessons to teach from. These lessons are being used all over the country and are accessible and ready to use with picture books, a lot of which the district already has. Teachers don't need to invent the wheel. It's all here for them, and the lessons can be chosen and adjusted to meet the needs of each student in classroom. So there are links there for example lessons, so, well, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Olson, for your comments regarding the policy as communicated, and thank you for the board for yielding additional time to everyone. My name is Mark Sobranik. I live at N106 Nyberg Road, and I am the father of a fourth grader and a sixth grader. By profession, I am a manager in the food manufacturing sector for over 22 years. I live by guidelines, policies, and requirements that ensure our food supply is safe for all consumers. It's the greatest fear I have that somebody eats something and gets sick or dies. We have controls in place to ensure that that doesn't happen. Personal protective equipment is a guideline, is also a requirement. My wife is a registered nurse and an EMT. She too follows guidelines, policies, and procedures to ensure patients are given the best care while ensuring the safety of the community and other medical professionals. PPE is not merely a guideline. It is a requirement. Members of the Board of Education and collective district administrators, I'm having a hard time understanding the minimalistic view in the implementation of the upcoming school year's policy regarding COVID, specifically the lack of a mask requirement, which is a basic PPE, which is in complete alignment with the recommendations of every major advising professional group and as well as the local health department. Thank you to the members of the board, community members, and school staff who are here tonight who are leading by example. As professionals yourselves, you have accepted a fiduciary responsibility through the positions you hold. You have a requirement to work in the best interest of all your stakeholders, administrators, staff, and especially the students. You have a duty of care to uphold, and many of us in the community do not feel that the current policy is in alignment with the best interests of all stakeholders. I humbly ask that you reconsider the vast base of data considering the dangerous variants, professional health, professional organizations, guidelines, and recommendations, and make the best decisions for all your stakeholders. Please help those students who are at most risk with underlying health conditions. As a parent of a child with special health issues that place them at a high risk for COVID complications, I cannot with good conscience avoid addressing you tonight. I hope the district has had the forethought to begin preparations to address the individual student plans that will ensure the needs of every student, like my child, and address the specific concerns of families like mine with due prudence. I cannot with good conscience place my child in a learning environment that does not have their specific health concerns addressed fully. Wearing a mask is a simple, evidence-based, public health practice to reduce the transmission of pathogens. Masking will help. Masking is basic personal protective equipment. Not requiring them will not help students like my child. It's too late when a child like mine becomes ill. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Rachel Stewart. I live at 265 Tamrock Drive, number one. I'm a parent of a Lake Mills middle schooler. I, for the sake of time, I won't go into all the ways. I'm proud of being an El Cap parent, but I love this district. I think they've done a great job, and I've always been very happy with the decisions that are made by the board and the district. However, I'm here tonight because I'd like to state on public record my disagreement with the decision that's been made to eliminate masking for the next school year. I won't go into CDC stuff. We've already covered that, right? So I'll skip ahead. I will say the quote from the CDC. CDC recommends universal indoor masking regardless of vaccination status at all levels of community transmission. So that's not a national data statement. That's an across-the-board statement. It concerns me greatly as a parent that this basic recommendation is being ignored by the district for reasons that were largely unknown. I appreciate what you said today. It does help me understand more the decision-making. But for the sake of time, you know, I won't read all those quotes that I had. As a parent, I do believe I have that right to know where that guidance is coming from when it goes against the guidance that is publicly available. Further, to allow a situation where some children will be masked and other children will not be masked is a great concern to me. It puts some students at the target of bullying, whether the reasons for the masking is because some are vaccinated or some are not, or because some parents choose to or some don't. I mean, either way, it sets up this great divide, and we already know that we are in a politically divided area. So, we all know the science. Everybody's got to wear a mask for it to be effective. So basically, we are having to tell our kids, wear a mask. It's probably not going to help you because everybody's not wearing one. Or, don't wear a mask. You probably won't be bullied, but we'll cross our fingers- won't be bullied, we'll cross our fingers and there won't be any COVID." I do disagree with the statement that all of the summer program kids are indoors all day. My child does attend the summer playground program, I'm very grateful for it as a working parent. They're outdoors most of the day unless it's raining. I know because he complains about it all the time. So, you know, and I think with summer school, we had much lower rates of enrollment, and many of those classes are outside as well, or in the gym, in larger spaces. So I think to compare summer school and last year where masking was required, to compare it to this year with full enrollment, no virtual option, which is great, I think everybody wants to be back in person, so I'm in favor of that, but, you know, to compare those two situations, it just doesn't really make sense logically to me, because you're going to have fuller classrooms with people who are not masked and are out in the community, we're all doing more things and engaging in more activities and seeing our families, which is amazing. So we really want to be able to keep it that way. And I do wish that if this policy stays in place, that we will have some parameters, some guidelines for when we're going to enforce masking, as opposed to just sort of going at it week by week, which I appreciate, there's variations, and I truly don't envy the decision that you have to make. So, I thank you for your time. I know it's a difficult decision, and I think that's why there's all these different viewpoints and opinions, I think that's why we have to follow the scientific guidelines, because that's what they're there for. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys, we're back. All right. I want to say thank you for being here, thank you to the ones that show up every single month, and the ones who only come when they feel like they need to. So what I gave you was a sheet, it's called VAERS, it's adverse reactions, it's by the government. So this is truthful, honest data that has been confirmed. So if you follow with me, I don't have, I think it's August 9th or 8th, but as July 30th, there has been 12,366 confirmed deaths from the COVID vaccine, 12,193 life-threatening adverse reactions, which means people who are still in the ICU. There has been 14,251 permanent disabled humans with open cases as we speak, and there is 11400 hospitalized right now. Again, I'm a week off, so this isn't completely accurate, it's probably higher. You guys have had, let's say, 18 months to kind of work out the goods and the bads of COVID. I think I saw the S R 1 funding was almost 67,000, and then the S R 2 was 318 that you guys had been given. You've had every opportunity to make the school safer. Unmask the kids or make it optional. Thank you for doing that, at least for now. On top of that, why don't we educate about vitamins? Washing hands. B12, zinc, turmeric, ginger, magnesium, elderly syrup, vitamin C, vitamin D3, the list goes on. Be the difference.
Nikki Girro.
Hi, Nikki Girro, 1021 East Mills Drive. Good evening, I am here to say thank you. I so appreciate your decision to go forward with making masks optional for this coming school year. I know that it's not a popular subject for some of you here. This is a wise move for us because it defers to our inalienable right as parents to do what we deem in the best interest of our children. In essence, your decision is recognition that the heated reporting about case numbers and test results, and the policy of mandatory masking of a past year, that the past year has created for many of our children a seemingly wasted year academically. Bravo for not making the same mistake going forward. The CDC, from which all guidelines flow, has recently admitted that the PCR tests are not valid, and therefore will be replaced at the end of the year with a more accurate type of test. This new test will segment COVID from the flu. With that in mind, will you now pledge to stay open and keep masks optional should cases spike in the fall? Because those case numbers cannot be based on this faulty and soon-to-be-replaced test? You have been provided ample material between past meetings and tonight's that medically prove the suspect nature of the efficacy of masks. Not only are they ineffective in stopping the particles of virus, but they are extremely harmful to the psychology and the state of mind of many of the district's students. As was reflected in the recent strategic planning mission, this district placed a premium on the emotional and mental well-being of our area students. Our summer school program with masks optional was a huge success, and not one case was reported in both students and teachers. This should be heralded, and I'm glad it helped drive home the point that so many of us have been making all along, masks should be optional. In Jefferson County, numbers are almost non-existent, and despite COVID fear by certain media outlets, there's no need for panic here in our small town. I've said it before, I'll say it again, those who fear catching the virus from our kids in school might need to rethink the public school system, especially in light of the safe environment over the past 18 months for students and teachers when so much was unknown, despite the uncertainty our school went forward and did so safely. Thankfully, now we know so much more than we did even a year ago. For those teachers who are afraid, I don't know if there's anything that I could say that would alleviate those fears. For those parents who are afraid of their children catching the virus from school, I would hope that how well our school did mitigating the virus during the height of the pandemic, and with the success of the summer school program, this will stage those fears. Again, thank you to the Board and Administration recognizing the need for our children to be educated without the burden of mandatory face coverings, as it truly respects the right parents have when it comes to the care of our own children. Thank you.
Kim Krasling Lund.
Hi, I'm Kim Kneeston Lund, and I live at 409 Fremont Street, and I'm going to try to talk fast. First of all, thank you for your work, for your service. I know how important this is and how much time you put into this. I want to start by just addressing, I think, some clarifications to some of the things, Dr. Olson, that you talked about, and that, I agree, the CDC data is a general state data, but when we look at what's happening in just Wisconsin right now, and it's not specifically to Jefferson County, but today, the Wisconsin State Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Underlee, came out and said she recommends that schools have a masking mandate. The Wisconsin Department of Health recommends that schools have a masking mandate. State employees are now required to be masked. I am an employee of the University of Wisconsin at Whitewater. The majority of university system colleges and universities are strongly recommending mask mandates for all faculty, staff, and students. The only reason that they're not absolutely mandating is because the state legislature has said that by law they can't, but we have gotten the strongest encouragement possible that we should be wearing masks in our college classrooms where we're trying to get at least 70% of our students vaccinated. We're not dealing with an elementary and part of a middle school full of unvaccinated students. Companies, businesses in the state of Wisconsin, Walmart, Target, Kohl's, are all requiring mask, mask mandates of their employees. There are bars and now concert venues in the Milwaukee area that are mandating masks for customers coming in. And so I just share that, in that we're seeing kind of a shift in our culture when it comes to masks compared to where we were a year ago. And I think that's because we are dealing with a completely different virus than we were a year ago. It is much, much more contagious, okay? And the critical difference is, is that we had a short period of time where if you were vaccinated against kind of the old COVID-19, you didn't pass it on to somebody else, so you didn't need to wear that mask. But that virus load in your nose as a vaccinated person is as high as the viral load in an unvaccinated person. And so that just makes mask-wearing for all of us much more critical. It's less now about the getting sick, that can be an individual choice, but it's much more about how we pass this along. Second, I want to make it really clear that I am not here in any way requesting virtual anything for anybody. As an educator myself, I know what it was like last year with college students trying to do some face-to-face, some virtual, some asynchronous. I do not know how the students, the teachers and the administrators in our district did it last year without just collapsing on the job. And to worry about teaching science and math, and I know that that is critical, but I was amazed that they could teach reading and writing to students with everything else going on. I'm not asking that, I am asking that you reconsider the request for the mask mandate. I also want to note that we spoke to the epidemiologist at Jefferson County today because we have a high-risk daughter, and he said we should have our kids, if he had a recommendation individually, in KN95 masks. Not, he can't mandate that, but that was his strong recommendation to us as a parent. Thank you.
Nikki Engler. Sorry, it's kind of, I can't read the writing very well, so I apologize for...
Hi, I just wanted to start out by saying before I forget, if children are wearing KN95 masks for seven to eight hours a day, I wonder what their oxygen intake would be? I don't think it would be very much, and it wouldn't probably be very good for their developing brains. So we do need to maintain some common sense and some reason that we do need to breathe Okay. Also, I would like to say how wonderful it is that everyone is able to exercise their own personal freedoms. Some people choose to wear their mask at certain meetings, and some people choose to wear their mask at others. Some choose to wear their masks at meetings and not wear their masks when they have gatherings with large groups of people outside on their own time. We should always have the freedom. We should not be up here mocking other people for making certain decisions that are best for their families. And the school, it's not your job necessarily to keep COVID out, it is your job to teach them the basic things that are needed to be taught. So viruses will happen regardless. There is different variants of a variety of different viruses, that happens all the time. We cannot predict the future, but we do need to understand that regardless of what anybody hopes to accomplish, it has already been proven that the current vaccinations that are available to everyone up to, or down to the age of 12, have not actually been effective in preventing this new strain, or the multiple strains that are out there. And in a lot of cases, fully vaccinated communities are still having outbreaks of COVID. So, I appreciate that there is some common sense going into this school year for the students and the faculty to be able to start the school year with mask options. I'm concerned that there is only one person that is actually held to that responsibility of decision-making, that's a great deal of burden for one person. I think that last year, the COVID mitigation policy was decided by the school board, I think that that is wise, because then all of your constituents have the ability to communicate with you and to come up here and publicly express to you how they feel, why they feel the certain ways, and expect you to speak on behalf of the people in making your decisions. If it comes down to one single person, that is an unrealistic burden to have to bear in any decision-making, because then you'll always be the target of all the problems, no matter what. That's my personal opinion on that decision-making. I also would like to say that there should be a school board decision made to make that change in authority, because that is a policy that was made under the school board last year. I don't understand how it's okay to just simply change that responsibility without having the school board come to a decision together to change how that is managed. Maybe it's just me, but I don't understand, I guess someone else brought that up, it does seem really weird that all of a sudden there is just this decision made without the school board approval. You were the ones who were elected, so you should be hearing the community and making the decision for the COVID policy moving forward as a school board. If you want to change it to, you know, Dr. Olson, then that should be something that you decide. But, thank you very much, have a good day.
Well, that concludes the public comment. I would like to thank each of you for coming this evening and expressing your views and thoughts. And we will move on then to the consent agenda. And that agenda includes the July regular meeting minutes, the July Finance Committee proceedings, the July Treasurers Report in vouchers and invoices, and the Personnel Report. I would ask for a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I move the Board approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that motion. Moved and seconded, discussion on the motion.
Quick question for clarification, how are we doing as far as hiring staff this coming? Are we, do we have a lot of open positions, or?
No, we were interviewing actually today for an additional second-grade teacher to keep the class size as small as part of our mitigation strategies. So that was basically the last hire that we need to make, and that was just a last-minute decision, so that's why we're still hiring, but otherwise, all the other positions are filled.
Other questions or comments? May we please have a roll call vote?
Brianna Besleck.
Aye.
Dawn Delaney.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Robert DiNperio.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next action item is the approval of gifts, and again, we find that our community is most generous, so we entertain a motion accepting those gifts.
I move the Board accept the following gifts from the Tyrrhenina Ladies Club, and thank them for their continued support of the students and programs here in the Lake Mills Area School District. There is a $300 donation to the elementary school toward the cultural differences, kindness values, and bullying awareness, as well as a $150 donation for the elementary school garden.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Comments? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Dawn Delaney.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Brianna Besleck.
Aye.
Robert DiNperio.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is possible agenda items for September.
So some of the regular items is the mandatory seclusion and restraint report that we report out on an annual basis. We'll also be continuing our work on the strategic plan, as you know, that was basically the framework, and then now, as we have staff coming back to school, we'll really start working on the metrics and just how we're going to monitor those data and the results of that as we move forward.
And other items as they come up.
Right.
Okay. Anybody want to move for adjournment?
I moved...
Oh, go ahead, Ken.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? No? All those in favor, say aye.
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 And again, thank you all for joining us this evening.